You look really good. You look in the time, Mr. Corrigan, you look good. I know. You look very presidential, sir. Well, congratulations, sir. You look very well done. All right? You ready? Come on.
Okay. Okay. Reconvene from closed session. Anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
We have nothing to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. So, welcome, everybody, to the October 17, 2017, City Council meeting. So, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And then, if you would stay standing, please, we have an invocation led by Chaplain Maury Hansen and Mr. Tomlinson, if you would lead us in the pledge.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your wise and loving Father, may I first say thank you on behalf of all of us who've gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings and thank you for the life itself. For the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings and for sustenance for our friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from the boundless and gracious nature of your body. Thank you for this opportunity to honor and recognize one of our own teachers, Ray Woods, tonight, and who has served our community and made us proud of our educational process over Dana Hills High School. In the scripture, we have said that citizens ought to obey the authorities since they have established these very authorities to promote education. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, our city council members, the city manager, the staff, and all those wonderful people that make this such a great city. We ask that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern, admit the conflicting issues and issues of our time, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our citizens, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, a confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Grant them all peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. It is your most blessed name, we pray. Amen?
Amen.
I have a quickie here. We have a new principal in Dana Hills High School. I don't know if everybody here has met him or not, but where's he at? Don't we stand up there?
It's hard to miss him.
No, well, here. Yeah.
Thank you, Chaplain. And welcome. Okay, we have a, we start out with the presentations first, and we have a couple today. And as Chaplain alluded to, the first is the VFW Teacher of the Year, Roy Woods. I would also ask Councilman Bezork to come up, and Wayne Yost, Commander of VFW Post 9934, and of course, Mr. Woods.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming. As some of you may know, I'm not only a city councilman, but I am a member of the VFW as well. So, I want to thank the mayor for allowing me to assist in this presentation tonight. We do give out various awards during the course of the year, and, you know, this is a special one. I don't, I'm not the chairman of this award, which is why we've asked our commander, Wayne Yost, to come up and assist with the presentation. So, with that, I'd like to introduce our commander, Wayne Yost.
Thank you, Rick. The Veterans of Foreign Wars has one primary requirement for membership, and that's that the veteran had to serve in a combat zone. The city of Dana Point is blessed to have 560 combat veterans who are now members of our post. And that's amongst the 2.3 million combat veterans throughout the United States that are VFW members. One of our missions is to promote and instill patriotism in our youth. We do this through a variety of programs, including scouting programs, patriotic essay contests in both our middle and high schools, and recognizing outstanding teachers in our community. Our teachers are the bedrock of our society. They're the ones that mold our youth, and they ensure the future of our country. I'd like to, at this time, introduce our adjutant and Southern California District Junior Vice Commander Marcia Keel to make a presentation to Ray Woods.
Thank you. From the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, National Citizenship Education Teacher, California District Two Recognition Award, presented to Raymond Woods, Dana Hills High School, in recognition for promoting citizenship, education in your classroom and school. And it's signed by District Commander John Mueller and myself, Marcia Keel, District Chairman for Teachers of the Year.
I'm going to make one other brief introduction. The gentleman here shooting the video, Jack Durish, he is our current chairman for our youth programs, which is Patriots Pen Essay Contest in our middle school, Voice of Democracy in the high school, and selecting the Teacher of the Year candidate. So, please recognize Jack Durish.
And I'd also like to recognize our Capistrano Unified School District trustee, Amy Hennecheck. Stand up. Thank you.
We have one more presentation from our post before I turn it over to the city. So, once again, Marine Major Marcia Keel. So, the first award that Ray won was for the Southern California District, which includes 19 VFW posts throughout the Southern California area. And I'll let Marcia make the next presentation.
I am very delighted that my very first year that I became the Teacher of the Year Chair for Post 9934, that our nominee not only made it at the post level, he made it at the district level, and he made it at the California State level. And that's a very high honor. So, I want to present this award from the Department of California to you, and also a certificate, kid, with a small check, a token of our appreciation. And if the principal could come up. We'd also like to recognize our principals because they're the leadership that allows the teachers to go in and promote citizenship, Americanism, and all the values and ideals that the veterans of foreign war hold in the highest standard. And this is for your school. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Woods, I hope you have a, you know, you didn't realize you were going to get so many awards, but now the city also would like to present you with an award in addition to the VFW. So, this will not take long to read, so I'll just read it. Certificate of Recognition to Ray Woods, California Department of Veterans of Foreign Wars Teacher of the Year Award, presented by the City Council of the City of Dana Point in recognition of your being named the California Department of Veterans of Foreign Wars Teacher of the Year Award winner. Congratulations. That's why I will ask, you know, perhaps being a teacher, you might want to say something.
I would only say thank you to all the people who have attended tonight. Thank you to the city council, and especially, thank you to all the veterans. You have all my respect and admiration.
Okay, for our second award. We have a certificate of recognition for a very, very special person that we would like to recognize. And I would like to bring up Barbara Johannes to say the words. You're very intimately familiar with this, with our person who's getting it. I don't want to say anything and take away your thunder, so. Do you want to start? This one or this one? Whichever one you want. Do you want to walk around? No, that's not really what I want to do, but I will. Okay.
On behalf of the Dana Point Historical Society Board of Directors, it is a pleasure to commend to the mayor and the city council and the city staff, the home and garden of Maria Del Carmen Calvo and Dr. Walter Henry as a treasure and a community resource. Along with other members, I have had the privilege of visiting their home on two garden tours and was fortunate on one of those tours to be invited by Mary Carmen into her home and studio. I have saved several articles describing Mary's artistic interiors to review for inspiration, and I must confess, in the hope to have their home and garden on a future Historical Society home tour. Two of those magazines are in my hand. The December 2016 OC Home Magazine described the home's sad state when they bought the home out of foreclosure. It was empty, neglected, and weeds choked the yard. Does that sound familiar? Mary Carmen transformed the yard with roses, vines, and more, designing it with a painter's eye. Pocket gardens have also been created in areas on either side of the house with rosemary hedges, flowers, and fountains. Just as Monet's gardens in Giverny provided the scene for many of his most famous paintings, Mary Carmen's gardens have inspired her to paint. Rather than tearing the original house down, the home was transformed into a painter's canvas. It is an old-world masterpiece, a romantic casa filled with art and antiques, serving as inspiration for Mary's art students. Historic doors, and I've heard that they have a connection to Houdini, welcome visitors and open into rooms with hand-plastered walls in muted Monet colors, hand-welded windows cast light on the decades-old patina of hand-stenciled floors. These and much more provide a perfect backdrop for Mary Carmen's oil paintings. The home is an exemplary model of the motto, "The greenest building is the one already built." As author Cindy McNatt wrote, "Every room is an oil painting," and Mary Carmen lives inside her paintings. And now, Joe Johnson would like to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you for this special time we get to honor someone dear to us. Sorry. I'm a student of Mary Carmen. If you are blessed, Maria Del Carmen comes into your life. Step into her garden, and beauty envelops you. With eight fountains to ease your parched senses and roses on the table, glasses filled with cookies and laughter, and intense seriousness. Honed over the years, you are a master at reading each student's character and then tailoring your approach while honoring the individual's unique sense. I will teach you to see, not paint. Faster, faster. Don't give it value. And when you do, you're sunk. Value the process, not the end result. Paint with passion, with your soul. Don't think so much. Start with the shadows. Following your brush across the palette is breathtaking. Your grace and exuberance sustain us through our struggles. At the evening's end, I never tire to see the vivid differences of our interpretations. A grateful life lesson. Mary Carmen can always see more of you and what you do than you see. If the canvas reflects your present state, there are no deceptions. And then, I find that honesty refreshing. When you painted your crows that were eating your hummingbirds, the resulting canvases were stunning. It was a journey to watch you in that process, and we all benefited from it. Squint your eye. The details fade, and suddenly, there is strength and wholeness. Look in the mirror. So, we look in the mirror at our own painting. It was so different in a moment. And when my mind is cluttered, this mantra arises. Squint your eye. How does one impart this woman? There is bone-deep strength, integrity, compassion, impeccable responsibility, wisdom, generosity, and an overwhelming reverence for beauty. You're a touchstone. You're an inspiration and a love. On so many levels, I thank you for these lessons. For whatever you do, you shine through, and that light travels through your paintings and through our lives. That's okay. Sorry. In your embrace, we are free to grow, and beyond words, I am grateful. As you say, go for it, kid.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. Thank you. Very touching. Thank you very much. Very emotional. Obviously, everyone who knows you loves you and is very devoted to you. And so, we're so happy that we were able to have this time with you and say thank you for everything that you've done. You're a treasure here, and we appreciate your being here. And we want to give you a certificate of recognition from the city to just say how amazing you are, your life, your work, and the fact that you have chosen Dana Point. We're very proud, and we're proud of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I have the most beautiful students. They just adore me, and they adore me, and they're always trying to do more. I don't earn that much, really. I'm really not as good as they think. No, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. [inaudible] Yeah. Whoops. I just knocked that one off. One, two, three. One more time. One, two. Three. [laughter]
I'm going to make one other brief introduction. The gentleman here shooting the video, Jack Durish, he is our current chairman for our youth programs, which is Patriots Pen Essay Contest in our middle school, Voice of Democracy in the high school, and selecting the Teacher of the Year candidate. So, please recognize Jack Durish.
And I'd also like to recognize our Capistrano Unified School District trustee, Amy Hennecheck. Stand up. Thank you. We have one more presentation from our post before I turn it over to the city.
So, once again, Marine Major Marcia Keel. So, the first award that Ray won was for the Southern California District, which includes 19 VFW posts throughout the Southern California area. And I'll let Marcia make the next presentation.
I am very delighted that my very first year that I became the Teacher of the Year Chair for Post 9934, that our nominee not only made it at the post level, he made it at the district level, and he made it at the California State level. And that's a very high honor. So, I want to present this award from the Department of California to you, and also a certificate, kid, with a small check, a token of our appreciation. And if the principal could come up. We'd also like to recognize our principals because they're the leadership that allows the teachers to go in and promote citizenship, Americanism, and all the values and ideals that the veterans of foreign war hold in the highest standard. And this is for your school. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Woods, I hope you have a, you know, you didn't realize you were going to get so many awards, but now the city also would like to present you with an award in addition to the VFW. So, this will not take long to read, so I'll just read it. Certificate of Recognition to Ray Woods, California Department of Veterans of Foreign Wars Teacher of the Year Award, presented by the City Council of the City of Dana Point in recognition of your being named the California Department of Veterans of Foreign Wars Teacher of the Year Award winner. Congratulations. That's why I will ask, you know, perhaps being a teacher, you might want to say something.
I would only say thank you to all the people who have attended tonight. Thank you to the city council, and especially, thank you to all the veterans. You have all my respect and admiration.
Okay, for our second award. We have a certificate of recognition for a very, very special person that we would like to recognize. And I would like to bring up Barbara Johannes to say the words. You're very intimately familiar with this, with our person who's getting it. I don't want to say anything and take away your thunder, so. Do you want to start? This one or this one? Whichever one you want. Do you want to walk around? No, that's not really what I want to do, but I will. Okay.
On behalf of the Dana Point Historical Society Board of Directors, it is a pleasure to commend to the mayor and the city council and the city staff, the home and garden of Maria Del Carmen Calvo and Dr. Walter Henry as a treasure and a community resource. Along with other members, I have had the privilege of visiting their home on two garden tours and was fortunate on one of those tours to be invited by Mary Carmen into her home and studio. I have saved several articles describing Mary's artistic interiors to review for inspiration, and I must confess, in the hope to have their home and garden on a future Historical Society home tour. Two of those magazines are in my hand. The December 2016 OC Home Magazine described the home's sad state when they bought the home out of foreclosure. It was empty, neglected, and weeds choked the yard. Does that sound familiar? Mary Carmen transformed the yard with roses, vines, and more, designing it with a painter's eye. Pocket gardens have also been created in areas on either side of the house with rosemary hedges, flowers, and fountains. Just as Monet's gardens in Giverny provided the scene for many of his most famous paintings, Mary Carmen's gardens have inspired her to paint. Rather than tearing the original house down, the home was transformed into a painter's canvas. It is an old-world masterpiece, a romantic casa filled with art and antiques, serving as inspiration for Mary's art students. Historic doors, and I've heard that they have a connection to Houdini, welcome visitors and open into rooms with hand-plastered walls in muted Monet colors, hand-welded windows cast light on the decades-old patina of hand-stenciled floors. These and much more provide a perfect backdrop for Mary Carmen's oil paintings. The home is an exemplary model of the motto, "The greenest building is the one already built." As author Cindy McNatt wrote, "Every room is an oil painting," and Mary Carmen lives inside her paintings. And now, Joe Johnson would like to say a few words.
Thank you for this special time we get to honor someone dear to us. Sorry. I'm a student of Mary Carmen. If you are blessed, Maria Del Carmen comes into your life. Step into her garden, and beauty envelops you. With eight fountains to ease your parched senses and roses on the table, glasses filled with cookies and laughter, and intense seriousness. Honed over the years, you are a master at reading each student's character and then tailoring your approach while honoring the individual's unique sense. I will teach you to see, not paint. Faster, faster. Don't give it value. And when you do, you're sunk. Value the process, not the end result. Paint with passion, with your soul. Don't think so much. Start with the shadows. Following your brush across the palette is breathtaking.
the quarterly direction from the council, but in the option, in the charter that allowed for more frequent meetings, they selected a monthly meeting at this point in time.
Okay. I was just concerned that it looked by the summary minutes here that two members voted against their charter, so I was just questioning that.
Yeah, no, I think, as I think of it now, I think the main objection was that it was 4:00 to 6:00, and they felt that they should continue doing their work and get through the agenda, just like we do, rather than recess at a specific time.
All right. I'll move the item.
Okay, I have a couple things. Okay, so their next item was a vehicle leasing program, and you notice on page 3, they moved to have staff draft a vehicle policy with, looks like A through J were their suggestions for that, and that one passed 4-1. So I would ask staff, where are we in the vehicle policy drafting?
If I could, really quick, Mark will get more into the particulars, but the recommended action was that the city council direct staff to do that. And with that, I'll turn over to Mark where we're at.
So we are preparing a document right now that's inclusive of the lease proposal, vehicle policy, as well as an inventory document to have a fuller discussion of the vehicle fleet, and that is tentatively scheduled for November 7th, and we'll try and get briefings for council members prior to that council meeting.
Thank you. And I note that attached to their minutes, pages 6 through 40, is attachments dealing with master lease program facts, use of city vehicles, and it looks like policies of various cities. Is that what I'm looking at here?
Repeat that for me, please. I'm sorry.
Just the attachments that the FRC put on the vehicle leasing to the minutes, pages 6 through 40.
Yes, yes, they were downloaded off the Internet by one of the members.
Okay, thank you. And then also pages 41 to 50, I guess there was another item, City of Dana Point Attorney Services Model with attachments, and it looked like some financial information. So is there anything we need to do with that at this meeting?
No.
Okay, so do we have a motion then to approve item number 7? Okay, so a motion to approve item 7. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? Vote? I mean, issues over there. Okay, it's usually up to us to push your button. By 4-0, item 7 has been approved. Mr. City Manager, you pulled item 13?
Yes, this is our Monthly Police Services Report, and Lieutenant Chilton has a presentation for you tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is our Monthly Police Services Report. Mike, next slide. As you can see, our Part 1 crimes are relatively stable, and when you look at the changes between 16 and 17, actually, we're down somewhat in our Part 1 total crimes. You see the number one in attempted homicide, that was the stabbing on Doheny Park Road in Las Vegas a couple months ago. Next slide. Again, Part 2 crimes, something that jumps out. You'll see the narcotics law violations, they're up, and that's really driven by proactivity with the deputies out in the field, writing citations for various narcotics violations. You see that uptick in vandalism, and I spoke to that at the last monthly presentation. There was a gentleman who decided to go on a tire slashing spree in the community. He was apprehended by our CSU team and is still in custody pending the outcome of that case. Next slide. Again, Part 2 crimes. You see the miscellaneous violations again, up. That has to do with proactivity on the deputy's part. Next slide. This is our Part 3, noncriminal. These are just calls for service. Calls for service are up, as you can see. They still are trending in the upward direction. Next slide. Our collisions are still, our collisions are down. I have good news. I've selected Deputy Cash Poitras to be our new motor officer. He'll be starting on November 10th, so watch your speed and come to a complete stop when you're in the community. There might be a motor behind a tree somewhere. So we're excited to have Cash on board, working with Matt and the members of the community to address some traffic issues. I think he's going to be an excellent fit into our police services. Next slide. As you can see, calls are down this month from August. It's kind of leaning towards the end of summer. They're still higher than last year. We still will come in higher for calendar year for calls for service, which has me a little concerned, but it also tells me, I believe, a lot more people are becoming engaged, are calling more. A lot of times, I face issues of underreporting, and when I look into these issues, I don't see any calls for service, so. Next slide. The events we participated in for 2017, September, the Ohana Festival, again, great event, no issues. Tall Ship Festival and the Relay for Life, all went well. Staff did an outstanding job. You know, these are fairly large events that bring thousands of people into a very small area, so. Next slide. I directed the team, the CSU team, this past month to focus on Doheny Village. They spent a tremendous amount of time there over the last few weeks, and you see they made 16 arrests and 30 citations. This is a work in progress, but there's no shortage of work. Next slide. This is just one of many arrests that the CSU team made this past month. Eight grams of methamphetamine, $700 cash, scales and packaging. As you can see, pled guilty to possession, sentenced to 60 days with good behavior, released after serving 30 days. Interestingly enough, and what I may do in upcoming presentations, is there's been some interest in the community as to what happens to these people that we write tickets to. I mean, how much time are they doing? What's their sentencing? And so I may bring back on a future presentation to get an idea of what happens after a citation is written. Next slide. And again, we hosted our Paw Patrol at Pines Park. Was a huge success. We also, Jill Jackson also was at Sea Terrace Park that Sunday. Great program, well received. Will be out there again at many community events. So if you have a dog and want to be part of Paw Patrol, give Jill Jackson a call, and she'll be able to set you up with a little bandana and frisbee and a tennis ball. Another thing that came up recently, and for some residents that may have been calling the nonemergency line to the Sheriff's Department, a couple weeks ago, we transitioned to a new answering system, basically a phone tree. So when you call the nonemergency line, you get queued into a phone tree, basically trying to direct your call. This has become standard in the industry. It kind of took some residents by surprise. When you still dial 911, you still get an operator for emergency, but this is for nonemergency type of situations. So now we can provide service in both English and Spanish, and like if we need to push out information, like the recent fires. So our dispatch center got deluged with phone calls about the fires, and this phone tree allows those calls to be diverted to the right people to get the right answer. Just to give you an idea, last year in 2016, the call center for the Sheriff's Department received 829,000 phone calls. That's emergency and nonemergency calls, so it's a very busy, busy dispatch center. And I believe this phone tree will actually enhance service. By the time you get through all the prompts, it's about a little under a minute, okay? But again, if it's an emergency, you dial, you can hang up, dial 911, and you will get an emergency operator. With that, I'll open it up to any questions from council members?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I did get several comments on the phone tree.
Right.
Yeah. I think the problem, the objection, was that for somebody who wanted to call and ask for help, they were the last in the phone tree.
Well, when they put this system together, that was a topic of discussion, because human nature, if you go right into the phone tree, and one is a dispatcher, people will not listen to the rest of the message there. And so now, a call taker will be handling a call that could have been better serviced through that phone tree. So understandably, there was some confusion, and the Sheriff's Department will be pushing out on social media and making more and more people aware. But understandably, I saw, I could see, I called it to kind of see what it was like, and, you know, I can see their point of view, but it's like change, like with anything. But I think at the end of the day, it's going to provide more efficient service for not only this community, but other communities.
Okay, thank you. Also, I see your slide, looks like here, page 10, item 13, on the Doheny Village Patrol search. Is that going to continue? Is that...
That will continue. I have some other ideas that I've been talking with the city manager, some innovative policing ideas. Another thing I have, I'll be rolling out, I was able to acquire two ATVs, which will be stored down at the community center, which will allow the deputies to get out of their patrol car, jump on an ATV, and begin to patrol the riverbed. We've been getting complaints about the riverbeds. So, you know, the department has asset procurement, and a lot of this stuff is military surplus that we're given, and these are two ATVs that I think will bring higher visibility on our riverbed and probably address some of the concerns. So I'll be, in a future presentation, once we get, we should be getting that up and running in the next few weeks, and I'll push that out and shoot some pictures and show you what that program's all about.
Okay, thank you. One last, well, two more things. On last weekend, I was over at Rigada HOA, which is just on La Cresta and Selva, basically. It's the gated community there. And they, one of their problems is, they said, PCH, after like 10 o'clock at night, it becomes a raceway, and there's people, you know, racing each other, and sometimes it's cars, sometimes it's loud motorcycles. So I said I would bring that to your attention and ask if that's something you've been informed about.
I was completely unaware about that, and that's another...
As was I.
Yeah, this is something different in today's world of policing, is a lot of times what I find out is people go to social media, and they share their story, or they'll share like a racing story, but it never gets to police services because they don't call.
Right.
And so usually, it comes to my attention by a conversation like this or a member of the community. And so, again, I want to reiterate to the community that social media is fine, but really, if you want some proactivity from police services, give us a call, and we'll get on it. We'll do what we lawfully can and try to address the concern. So we had an incident a few weeks ago. Someone reported their car got broken into on Camino El Molino. You know, kind of just sharing her story, eh, you know, a few cars got broken into. Nobody called. There's no, and so that's lost information, so they're reporting out on social media, but we need to know about, we need to memorialize that, we need to document that type of activity, because that drives our mission. So again, another reminder, you can push out on social media, but take the time to call police services.
Okay. And so I would encourage everyone, call police services. You're not bothering them. They want to hear from you. Chief Chilton has just, you know, reaffirmed that.
Absolutely.
That they want to hear from you, they need to hear from you. So please, call. Don't feel like you're a bother, because I know sometimes people feel, well, you know, it's really not that important, and then you don't find out about it.
Absolutely. So yeah, you're not bothering me, call me any time of the day or night. I'm available.
And then I did have one person asking me a question about the citations. Year-to-date seemed much fewer than in the past. Is that by design? Is it just that people are obeying traffic laws more?
You're talking about moving violations?
Yeah, I think traffic...
Well, right, and they are down, and it's a combination of many things. You know, usually when calls for service are up, the deputies are focused on calls for service. We've been down a motor, so that kind of lowered the numbers. I've been bringing in motors on grant money over time. I think you will definitely see that change once Cash gets in place and gets his marching order, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Did anybody else have, Mr. Tomlinson?
Yes, I'd just like to affirm the mayor's comments. I had some contact with public members, and they said, you know, they're kind of, don't want to call the police department or sheriff's department because they feel like they're annoying them, but I said, you must call. It'd be great if we have that information. And a lighter note, how many deputy dogs do we have in town now?
Well, a few hundred.
Wow, a few hundred?
Yeah, that actually, that's going to get some legs and expand. It's a really neat program, and for those of you who don't know, you get this little bandana, and on the back of the bandana is the sheriff's department phone number, so when you're out walking your dog, you're the eyes and the ears, and take the time to call. And you also get a little ball and a little frisbee, and it's all good.
Thank you, Chief.
And thank you, and thank you, deputies. We noticed a difference, and I have received comments from residents as well, that they noticed the difference, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment on this? If not, do I have a motion to accept the Police Service Monthly Report?
I'll so move the motion.
Motion carries 4-0. Okay, so we come to the public comment portion of our meeting. Do we have any public comments? Thank you. Okay, so public comment portion is, anybody who attends our meeting, any member of the public, has three minutes to come and speak to us on any issue, any issue that is not on the agenda, because if it's on the agenda, then you can speak at the time that we take up that item on the agenda. So this is to speak about anything generally. We have a three-minute time limitation, and we ask that you please observe that time limitation, that we will listen to you... Discussion, vote. Motion carries for zero. Okay, so we come to the public comment portion of our meeting. Do we have any public comments? Thank you. Okay, so public comment portion is, anybody who attends our meeting, any member of the public, has three minutes to come and speak to us on any issue, any issue that is not on the agenda, because if it's on the agenda, then you can speak at the time that we take up that item on the agenda. So this is to speak about anything generally. We have a three-minute time limitation, and we ask that you please observe that time limitation, that we will listen to you courteously, and ask that you address your comments through the chair and the council, also courteously. Please understand that we cannot discuss anything that is not on our agenda, so we won't have a discussion, and we won't have a discussion or take action up here, but that doesn't mean we're not listening to you. In fact, we are listening to you, and may bring that issue back at a later date. If you have any handouts, please distribute them to our clerk, and she will see that they get to us. So let me open the public comment portion with Gerling Kennedy and then Carol Lee Darnell. So if you would just come up, please, take the microphone, say your name and your city that you live in, and then start speaking.
Thank you. My name is Gerling Kennedy, and I live at 33902 Granada Drive in Dana Point, and I am a widow. I have no children, no grandchildren, I have no family. My husband and I built our home in Granada Drive in 2000, and when, I have half an empty house now, and a friend suggested Airbnb. And I'd never thought about that, and I was delighted to understand that I could share my home, could share my street, could share my city with people from around the world, and I have had people from around the world, and they have become friends. I'm invited to go to Moscow, I'm invited here, I'm invited there, I do not know whether that's going to happen or not, but that's beside the point. However, what I missed to do is, when I got a letter from the city, to my surprise, on May the 19th, 2015, telling me that I was in violation because I did not have a short-term rental permit. I flew over this letter, totally not concentrating on the contents, I called Mr. Harris immediately and said, "Mr. Harris, what do I have to do? I don't understand, what is this?" And somehow, we started to talk about taxes. I thought I owed taxes, and I went right away, I made a note, on 6/17/2015, less than four weeks later, I called Airbnb, make sure that I had paid my taxes, and so on and so forth. I am not blaming Mr. Harris, it was my fault that I did not recognize what I had to do at that time, require a permit. Two years and three months went past, and I get another letter, and that was on August the 23rd of this year, and now I am not allowed to do my Airbnb any longer, unless it's 30 days or more, which of course is the majority of the people that come are not staying that long, even though I had many, many long-term, two months, three months. I have somebody right now for three months from Oslo, so I've been very fortunate. I am of course extremely upset, it's my fault, I recognize that, but I would like to emphasize, we are promoting our town, people spending money, they rent cars, they shop, they eat, they get...
Keep going.
Is this it?
This is just your work. Go ahead.
So, it's benefiting the city, people get to know our area, they get to know our county, and so on and so forth. I bet you that nobody in my street even knows I'm doing Airbnb. Nobody knows. I very rarely have, I think I had two times, two people, normally it's just one person. So I'm asking, why are we having this movement? Why are we having this decision that we cannot do short-term rental? Because I know there have been violations, but I would like to emphasize that it's helpful also to us to meet our financial obligations. I'm now on a fixed income, I'm a widow, I'm retired, and this has helped me pay my mortgage, and so on and so forth. And last but not least, and I know this has nothing to do with Airbnb, in my street there are two drug rehab houses, and there are more to come, behind me, across, and so on and so forth, and that's of course extremely upsetting, as you can imagine. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And Carol Lee Darnell?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Carol Lee Darnell. I'm actually a resident of Yorba Linda, though I'm not sure that's germane to what I'm here to discuss. I'm here to...
Just for our record.
Yeah. I am the Local Government Affairs Representative for Southern California Edison, and I've been working in South Orange County for about a year now. I wanted to let you know that I've recently been reassigned to the city of Dana Point. I had a majority of South County cities, but Dana Point was not in my portfolio. I now have been, I'm your new rep. You all should have gotten an email from the former rep about a week ago, letting you know of the change, so I wanted to come so that you could put a name to the face. Your town is serviced by SDG&E for your electrical needs, but we do have the plant just south of here, and I know that's of significant concern to many residents in your community. So I'm here, I'm here to be a resource to you. I've left copies of my card with the city clerk if you have any questions. I do not work out of Rosemead, out of corporate headquarters. I'm here, I'm located in Orange County, I live in Orange County, so I'm, you know, here to be of service if you need anything.
Great. Thank you very much.
And now I'm not being rude, but I'm going to go do the same thing in Laguna Nigal, so you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. And that's the end of the public comment portion, so I will close that. Thank you for coming and taking time out of your day to let us know your issues. All right, the next item is a public hearing, item 15, TEFRA Public Hearing Regarding Conduit Financing for the Caritas Corporation at 33951 Silver Lantern. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Kelly Renders has our staff report tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We are here this evening to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. The project in the jurisdiction of Dana Point is the apartment complex located at 33951 Silver Lantern. The Caritas Corporation proposes to obtain tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $67,500,000 to finance the acquisition improvement of mobile home parks it owns throughout the state of California, and refinance the apartment complex owned by Caritas Corporation on Silver Lantern and Dana Point. Persuasive to federal law, in order for all or a portion of the bonds to qualify as tax-exempt bonds, the city of Dana Point, as the local jurisdiction, must adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds, and provide a public hearing so any concerned parties may speak in favor or against the use of tax-exempt financing of the project. The Caritas Corporation requested that the California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, participate in the issuance of one or more series of revenue bonds. CMFA is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the Caritas Corporation, and the city will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no costs in the issuance of the proposed debt. By issuing one larger series of bonds through one bond issuer, which is CMFA, Caritas can achieve lower overall costs of financing. This savings goes directly to the mission of Caritas as a nonprofit corporation focused on providing affordable living arrangements for residents throughout California. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA, such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the code, and the California Government Code, Section 6500. The resolution will also authorize the mayor, or any designee thereof, to execute the joint exercise of powers agreement with CMFA. I would like to introduce Lee McCormick from CMFA, and the president, CEO of Caritas, Randy Redwitz. Dawn Price is here, she is the executive director of Friendship Shelter, and we are available for questions.
Thank you. Okay, so we conduct a public hearing on the requirements of the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, which is commonly known as TEFRA, and the Internal Revenue Code for this conduit financing. Mr. City Manager, do we have a, okay, we have a public speaker, do we have someone who's amputated, who is going to present the public hearing to us, or...
I think Mr. Redwitz is here on behalf of Caritas, and would like to speak as the entity facilitating the financing, and the owner of the property specifically at Silver Lantern.
Okay.
So you may want to open the public hearing and invite Mr. Redwitz to come and speak.
Okay. Then I do have your request to speak, and so I will open the public hearing portion of this, and invite you up, please, to speak.
And Madam Mayor, while the speaker's coming forward, just to clarify, there's no formal requirements for the public hearing, it's simply a matter that you must open it up to the public to give input. So, in other words, there's not a requirement that anybody make a formal presentation or anything like that, and really, the only planned presentation is what the staff has presented in the staff report.
Good, thank you. Good evening.
Evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Randy Redwitz. I'm a resident of San Juan Capistrano, I grew up in Dana Point. I am the CEO of the Caritas Corporation. Caritas Corporation is a nonprofit. It's been in existence for a little over 20 years. Its mission is to provide affordable housing to low and very low-income qualifying individuals. We currently have 23 communities throughout the state of California, we are solely within the state of California. We have approximately 12,000 residents throughout those 23 communities, approximately 4,500 individual units across those properties. In all cases, with the exception of Silver Lantern, our purchases and our financing of our properties is through the use of tax-exempt bond financing. We're very experienced and very versed in that arena. We have a number of bond agencies, such as Nuveen, that know the Caritas Corporation extremely well, and are a big supporter and buyer of our bonds. We know the mechanics of tax-exempt bond financing quite well. We've lived with it and worked with it for those 20 years. I believe we've affected a very meaningful mission in providing housing to these individuals. The Silver Lantern property in specific was acquired about a year ago. It was bought with the purpose of entering into a joint venture with the Friendship Shelter of Laguna Beach, and it houses, it has 17 units, housing 16 residents and one office studio. It's a very exciting venture for us. We're very, very effective in working with the Friendship Shelter, and so it's a very exciting project. That project was financed conventionally, and this refinancing that is before you tonight takes that refinancing, takes that financing from conventional to tax-exempt bond financing. That's very important for us, because Caritas, in all of its properties, is able to achieve quite a substantial property tax exemption because of its tax-exempt bond financing and its nonprofit status. Those savings are poured right back into the communities that we serve, and so that's a very critical element in this refinancing for us. We are on a very critical timeline. We're trying to get this financing done by mid-November. That seems like plenty of time, but it's a very complicated process, takes a lot of moving parts to be orchestrated together. We're trying to get this financing done before there's another uptick in interest rates, which more than likely will happen by the end of the year. So we are on that critical path. If there is any questions, I'm very, very happy to answer them. Otherwise, that's all about Caritas.
Thank you. Our mayor pro tem, who's not here today, took a tour of your facility with Chief Chilton, and he was very impressed.
Wonderful. That's great to hear.
Yes.
Great to hear.
He said very good things.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Redwitz? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I have a list of clarifying questions. This is, you know, I read the staff report pretty closely, but just bear with me, I do have...
Okay, sure.
Several things. And I believe this might have been in the staff report, but if we join this JPA...
Yes.
The city joins it, who's on the board of directors of this JPA?
Well, I can ask Lee to answer that, he's from that organization directly, so he can address.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
Lee McCormick with the California Municipal Finance Authority. We are the joint powers authority that is issuing the bonds, the conduit bonds, on behalf of Caritas. To answer your questions, our board members consists of former staff members of Orange County, Palm Desert, the current CFO for the city of Anaheim's on the board as well, the former redevelopment agency executive from Palm Desert's on the board, and then we have, I'm trying to think the last one is, we have a former city manager from, I'm trying to think which, one of the cities in the desert.
Okay. So we, in other words, the cities that join the JPA...
They do not, no. They're not board members. Currently, the CMFA has over 280 city and county members. The CMFA has financed over $10 billion of tax-exempt conduit financing since 2004. We're the only joint powers authority that actually has a give-back program. We give back 25% of our issuance fee to our city and county members where the project is located, and another 25% to a local charity in that jurisdiction.
That was one of my other questions. I see it's 25%. Is that, do you have actual numbers, what that means?
To date, we've given back over $10 million to local charities throughout California through the Give Back Program. The city and county number, I don't know off the top of my head, I believe it's roughly half of that.
Total throughout the existence of the JPA, or is that per year? What do you mean?
That's total through the existence of, since 2004.
Okay, I mean, I'm not great at math, but do you know what that is per year? What, is the tracking...
On an annual basis, well, the revenues, it hasn't been a straight line on issuance. For example, last year, we did roughly $2 billion of financing last year, this year we've done roughly the same amount year-to-date. So it's been kind of a varying amount of issuance, but roughly, if you look at averages, probably about $800,000 per year. We've been in existence for 14 years, and 10 to 11 million.
Okay. And when you issue these bonds, this is for Caritas, basically.
Correct.
Are they, who else do you work with? I mean, are there other nonprofits that the JPA is working with?
Well, we do. Any nonprofit that wants to issue bonds to finance their capital programs can issue through the CMFA. So nonprofit has federal and state status where they can issue tax-exempt bonds, but it has to be through a governmental entity like the CMFA.
Okay.
The JPA structure.
Okay. This might be a question back for you. I read in the staff report that you do social well-being activities as well for Caritas.
Yes, we do.
What does that mean, and where do those take place?
They occur right at the community level, and they're typically programs such as, we have a very extensive reading program for our family communities, and we have scholarship programs, we have food subsidy programs, we have education programs through videoconferencing at our various communities, all surrounding the, trying to encourage the community to grow and improve themselves and be more vibrant in their community.
I might have missed it. Where does that take place?
It happens right at the community level, so at each location, the 23...
Apartment building.
23 different locations, yes.
And I read that the housing mission has expanded from affordability to critical need. What does that mean?
What that means is that when Caritas first went into existence, it dealt with affordable housing, which meant that individuals had the ability to pay, but they had very low income, and therefore, in every community that we have... And therefore, in every community that we have, we either self-impose or we live under a rent-controlled environment. So we live in a very confined rent-increase environment, and that makes our communities affordable for the low and very low income. Now, with Silver Lantern, we ventured into a different environment. We entered into an environment where the individuals have no income to individually support themselves. So it's not affordable in that sense, but it's subsidized income to those residents to pay for the rent. So that's the difference.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you? Is that clear to you?
Sort of. I mean, it's more clear now than before.
Okay, good.
I had a question. How do you choose the residents? What's your criteria? How do you become a resident in this type of project?
Well, every year, we have to go through what's called an income survey. And that income survey says that we have to have a certain criteria of low and very low income qualifying individuals. We have to have that for our exempt status, we have to have it for property tax exemption, the rest. So when we look at residents, we income-qualify them coming into our communities, and we make sure that those residents fit the income criteria that we have to maintain the standard of. So we monitor that coming in, and we monitor it every year with the residents that we currently have.
Are there any geographic restrictions on that? Do you focus just on the community where it's located? Are you reaching out throughout the states to house people, or what's the geographic limitation on your qualifications?
We're strictly within California, from Northern California to, all the way to San Diego County. So those 23 communities are sprinkled throughout all of California. Is that your question?
I think, in other words, the goal is to house people throughout California, not just in the community where the project is located?
No, the project is the community. I'm using that term interchangeably, I guess. We like to call them communities as opposed to mobile home parks or apartment units or whatever, because we try to build in a community spirit and a community involvement. So we term them communities.
If I could, maybe let me try to ask it another way.
Sure.
Do the people who would otherwise qualify financially, if they are in Dana Point, do they have preference over someone who you would be screening who is not from Dana Point?
No, we do not screen by geographic area. I mean, our communities are in geographic areas. Typically, those people are from that community, but we don't screen for geographic.
Okay. Just a few more here.
Sure.
Let's see, I got that.
Good, I love talking about Caritas.
You already addressed, one of my questions was how time-sensitive is this? So I guess my question is, what, why is it so time-sensitive? Or why, was there some type of delay in bringing this to us? Or what's going on? Why the November deadline?
Actually, this subject was in front of you two weeks ago, and it was felt, I believe, I don't want to speak for anybody, that was felt that there was more information needed before it was presented to your council. And so therefore, the city manager asked if we would postpone for two weeks until more information could be gathered and more comfort level in entering into a tax-exempt financing could be achieved. We've got all, we've got six communities in this refinancing, and so we have six Tefras that we're going through. We've gone through, this is our fourth right now, or fifth, I should say, and we have one more next week, and we'll be done with our Tefra hearings, and then that will trigger our financing in the first of November, first couple of weeks in November. So it's, the tax-exempt bond financing is a complicated process in the sense that there's a lot of moving parts, as I said earlier, and we have to bring those bonds to market. They have to be sold, and we're trying to not pass a threshold of another interest rate movement if we can help it.
Okay. Shifting gears a little bit, you mentioned there was one office and studio. Is that for some type of property manager, or what's the purpose of that?
Yes, it's a manager for the community, yes.
An employee of?
Friendship Shelter.
A Friendship Shelter? And are they on the premises? Do they live there 24/7?
They don't live there. They're there every day, seven days a week, but they're not living there.
And this may be a question for you, maybe a question for you, this is my last question.
Sure.
Once Dana Point's in the JPA?
Right.
Then do you, you have the ability to just, to have the tax-exempt bonds issued without coming back to us for any future projects?
Actually, no. Every time there's a tax-exempt bond financing in the city of Dana Point, we would come back, because you have to have a separate Tefra hearing or public hearing for each financing in the city. So if there's a project that came down the road that the city didn't want, you just refused to hold the Tefra, and the financing wouldn't happen. So you are, you have local control over any future projects.
Okay. Do you have any plans for future projects, to be honest?
Well, honestly, we'd love to do more of what we just did. There's a financial constraint on us as to our ability to do more, but we'd love to do more of this particular model. It's worked out very, very, very well for the residents, so.
All right. Thank you.
I'd love to come back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I just have one question. You said you're subsidized, your renters are subsidized. Who subsidizes?
Caritas itself is not subsidized. It is, it raises its own capital through its own cash flow and refinancings. But in this particular case, the Silver Lantern project, in that venture with the Friendship Shelter, the Friendship Shelter is the master lesssee of the property, and they supply the tenants, and those tenants pay their rent through a HUD subsidy. And that's how that's a subsidized particular project.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you explain to me a little bit more about this relationship between Caritas and Friendship Shelter? I understand through your trailer parks or your other communities, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You have services wrapped into those communities?
Right.
Where you're doing the teaching. However, you're not physically operating this side, is that correct?
We are not, no.
And so, I don't know if I can, if you're the proper person to ask, but what type of services are being offered at this facility?
Okay. I should ask Dawn to come up if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
And let her speak directly to that. She's the executive director of Friendship Shelter?
Okay.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. So these 16 individuals that live at the Silver Lantern property are 16 of 85 that we manage in permanent supportive housing throughout Southern Orange County. We have mostly scattered site, including some scattered sites elsewhere in Dana Point. We go in and we rent a single apartment, and then we place a person into that unit. So these are 16 of this larger 85 individual project. We have a staff that provides supportive services, really on a very individualized basis. So some of our folks that we've had, we started this program in 2014, some people who've been with us since then have reached a level of self-sufficiency where we're really just checking in with them on a monthly basis, or if they call us and have a need. We have people who need daily check-in, especially when they're early in their housing. These are people who've been homeless and are now housed, and so that transition can be a rough one for someone who hasn't been in a dwelling for a while. So we provide whatever the individual needs. We respond to what they ask of us, as well as what we believe that they need at the time. That could include, we have a psychiatrist, we have counselors, we provide transportation to medical and other types of appointments. We have a benefits counselor who tracks everyone's income benefits, whether it be food stamps or social security disability or whatever. There's always deadlines for reapplication for those kinds of things, and so we're constantly working on that as well. As well as at Silver Lantern particularly, working very hard to build a community and do social activities and things that help all those residents feel part of a community in spirit of the Caritas approach, as well as what we have always dreamed of trying to do. The other place we're doing sort of a single-site type of project is in San Clemente. We own two apartment buildings there. Friendship Shelter owns those. And there we have 14 transitional age youth, age 18 to 25, each of whom has a serious and persistent mental health diagnosis, and we're providing permanent supportive housing in those two properties as well.
So I guess it goes back to, Mr. Vixor asked this question of Caritas, but this is really more of a question for you since you're operating.
Sure.
How do you select your residents?
So our residents have to be qualified as chronically homeless. The two ways that someone qualifies as chronically homeless is long-term homelessness and a disabling condition. That can be a physical disability, a mental health disability, a disabling substance-use issue, and in any of those cases, that would qualify someone. They are qualified through an access point throughout the county and provide geographical preference typically. What we find with our chronically homeless clients is that they typically indicate their, where they are homeless as their geographic preference. They're very reluctant to move. I guess we run two shelter programs as well. When we have a shelter person in Laguna Beach who's placed to an apartment in Fullerton, they often turn that down because that's not a place that they have any support. So we typically find in our, in the permanent supportive housing that we manage, most of our people are coming from Southern Orange County.
Okay. You mentioned an access point. What is that?
So an access point is a place where a homeless person would be assessed for their qualification, for what kind of housing is most appropriate for them. We use a national best practice evaluation tool called the VI SPADA. I'm not going to remember what all of that acronym stands for, but it's a tool used to indicate how vulnerable an individual is. And people are placed in housing based on their vulnerability. So the most vulnerable are housed first. The reason for that is because the most vulnerable people on our streets cost us the most money. The recent UCI, United Waste Study, found that a chronically homeless person on the streets of Orange County costs us in police, fire, emergency room, medical, hospital, about $100 and some thousand dollars, slightly over $100,000. Housing that person cuts that cost in half, and so there's a financial as well as a social or emotional reason to house the most vulnerable first. So those access points provide that assessment tool, provide a score for that individual, and then assist the individual in the documentation they need to be housing-ready. That will be a documentation of a disabling condition, a documentation of their homelessness, and their income.
If I may, Madam Mayor, for the benefit of Councilman Mueller, the city of Dana Point's contract with Mercy House acts as the access point for Dana Point.
You just hit my next question.
So we have outreach services that are provided. We have, I think, 62 folks on a by-name list that have been through that VI SPADA process, and then are categorized. And obviously, the most challenging are those that are the serious and persistently mentally ill that need the wraparound housing of the sort that is provided at this facility.
And I should say that 64 of our 85 units are provided in collaboration with Mercy House, so they're a very close collaborator.
Okay. Well, thanks for clarifying that. That was going to be my very next question, as a matter of fact. How do you get these people to the access points?
Right.
Are there sets of rules that they have to live by? I mean, I know that, you know, I've heard from a lot of people, they don't like to go into, you know, homeless shelters because there's rules around it.
Yeah.
But this seems like they're in individual apartments.
They're their own individual apartment, which does ameliorate that issue quite a bit. They have to provide, they have to follow the same rules that you and I would have to in leasing an apartment. So there's a basic residential lease that they're, they can't break the law. They can't run a business out of a residential apartment, things like that. Beyond that, we have community expectations that we treat much more as expectations than rules. We try to work with people where they're at and move them in a direction that makes them better community members over time. So if someone is breaking the law, disrupting the community, that's grounds for a lease to be terminated. We've done that once already at Silver Lantern, so we're willing to do that. But we're always working first.
Can I ask a question real quick? When you terminate a lease?
Yes.
What happens to the individual?
In this case, we terminated the lease, and they returned to a shelter environment. More often, when we terminate a lease in one location, we'll try them in another department and attempt to start over and try it again. Our goal is not to return people to homelessness if we can possibly.
Right, that was going to be my question. Are you just putting them back out on the street?
Absolutely not. These are very stable communities. We have a 94% retention rate over the course of our program, and that is, that's going up, not down. So we're actually been very successful at keeping people housed.
And I just have a couple more questions for you. So do you have a program as these people reassemble back into the community and start to work on their own? Do they then have to move out of this? Because this is a critical need, which means they have no income.
Right.
What happens to them as they start working and generating income and moving on?
As a system, we're beginning to look at that very, you're ahead of us a little bit. We are looking at higher-performing systems. Orange County is considered one system. Higher-performing systems are taking a look at who has gotten to a point where they can maybe transfer, if not through income, to private housing. It is Orange County. Maybe to a simple Section 8 voucher that doesn't have the wraparound services, and that would open up another slot for someone more vulnerable.
That was my question.
So we're beginning to look at that.
Are you able to reopen them? And maybe Caritas is the right partner because they do offer these low-income?
Yes.
That's right.
We've talked about, it's Garden Grove Community for one.
Okay. And I guess my last question is, the residents at Silver Lantern, are they, where did they come from? Are they from Dana Point, or?
They're from, mostly from Southern Orange County. I don't, I didn't bring with me a census. Some were in Dana Point, some were in Laguna Beach. They're typically Southern Orange County people. It can be very difficult to say where a homeless person is from.
Yeah, I know. You kind of know where they, you know where they spend most of their time.
Yeah, we have a lot of people who sleep at the ASL in Laguna Beach and spend their days, you know, on the streets in Dana Point, for example. And so there is a lot of that sort of back and forth with these beach communities. But by and large, our clients tend to be from Southern Orange County. They're the people that already know us, so they're more likely to accept housing from us. And in this community in particular, because we could provide a community where people would be together, we've been able to have people that we've been working with in the south part of the county live together who already know each other.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Any questions, Steph? Any other public comments? No, Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Now close the public hearing portion. So we have been asked to adopt a resolution. So I will make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving, authorizing, and directing the execution of a joint powers agreement relating to the California Municipal Finance Authority and approving the issuance of the bonds by the CMFA for the Caritas Corporation, which is a nonprofit benefit and organized under 501(c)(3) of the IRS Code, to provide for the financing of all or portion of the project. So I will not read the title to the resolution, but it is attached as Action Document A. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One quick question. I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Dawn.
Dawn, you can do it from there, and I think I know the answer to this. But what were to hap, what would happen if on the off-chance, I know it's like infinitesimal, the JPA failed? Where does the debt reside?
That would really be?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The debt is with the conduit barbs. So it is with Caritas. The CMFA is only a conduit, which is basically just overseeing the issuance of the debt. The debt, these are revenue bonds, conduit financing, so it resides with the borrower.
Maybe you should come up so we get this on record.
I was just going to say that.
That way you can, could you just repeat that?
Yes, Lee McCormick with the CMFA. The debt that's issued for these bonds is never on the books of the CMFA. It is always on the books of the borrower of the project, in this case, Caritas. So in the strange, you know, event that the CMFA were to fail, the debt would still be at the borrower level and serviced by the borrowers. It is never, it is never debt of the CMFA, any of our JPA members, any cities, or any state entity.
Okay. One last question for Caritas. Same question to you. Where does it go if Caritas decides we want out of, or defaults on, or goes bankrupt?
Same thing. As was mentioned earlier, all the bond offering documents, and I can As was mentioned earlier, all the bond offering documents, and I can read kind of the, this is a sample of the preliminary offering statement. It says very clearly on here, and I can read the whole thing, "The bonds are limited obligations of the authority payable solely from and secured by the pledge of revenues and amounts in certain funds and accounts under the indenture. None of the authority, its members, or the State of California, or any of its political subdivisions is directly, indirectly, contentionally, or morally obligated to use any other monies or assets to pay all or any portion of the debt service due on the bonds. To levy or pledge any form of taxation whatsoever, therefore, or to make any appropriation for their payment, the bonds are not secured by a pledge of the faith and credit of the authority, its members, or the State of California, or any of its political subdivisions, nor do they constitute indebtedness within the meaning of any constitutional or statutory debt limitation. The authority has no taxing power." So again, this is what's called a conduit financing. So really, the JPA is only in the process of a government oversight, but not obligated with regards to the repayment of the debt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Buzork?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I thought of one question. This might be for staff. Since we are talking, this is a homeless issue. Did you ever meet with anyone from our, we have a homeless task force. Have you met with anyone? Or I'll ask staff, did our homeless task force address this issue in any way?
I think Don.
They did not, although Don is a regular attendee of our homeless task force. And as...
I went to them prior to that.
And as was mentioned, the Mayor Pro Tem, who's the Chair of the Homeless Task Force, has visited the facility, and I joined him for that visit.
Can you tell me about that meeting? What happened? What was discussed? And was there any result that came out?
On this particular topic?
Yes.
I think it was mostly an FYI. Actually, that meeting, I sent our marketing manager and development director, I was at another meeting, and so she made, just made the group aware of what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'd just like to thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
It's very needed.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the adoption of the resolution, I believe. Did we have a second? Did you second that, Mr. Tomlinson?
I did.
Yes. Okay. Any further discussion, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. You know, this is, this was relatively new to us, but the model that you guys are talking about, it seems like a really innovative way to address this problem. And it's something that I haven't heard coming up to this. This has been one of the biggest issues we've had in our city for a long time, and not just here locally, but this is a national problem. And, you know, when I first read this, I was a little leery about it. I was like, what's going on here? You know, are we going to attract more homeless into Dana Point? How does this work? But I think you guys have answered that. I do, I really do want to commend you for what you're doing and the process that you're going through. I mean, it seems like it's going to be something good for the community. And I'm personally nervous because it's new. Unlike anybody else, when it's new, you're nervous about it, but I'm very, I'm pretty excited that we may start to see a solution in our community for this, so I'm going to support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And then vote? Thank you. Motion carries four zero. Thank you again. Thank you for your time and explaining all this to us and...
Absolutely. Anytime.
Thank you for what you do for the community.
Thank you. We're proud of it.
Yes, you should be. You should be.
Sure.
Okay, now we go on to the unfinished business. Item sixteen, Development Update. Staff report, please.
Yes, Ms. Luna Reynosa has a brief staff report tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Per your direction, we've provided a monthly update of development activity. This is new permits, discretionary permits from planning issued in the month of September, as well as, and this is in Supporting Document A, is provided, as well as a cumulative list from the months of July through September. And we also have an update on advanced planning activities as well. Per your direction, there were no major projects that were approved or permits issued during the month of September. That concludes my update, unless there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? I guess I just have one for City Manager. Now, I know we've been doing this monthly, but is this something we want to put on the consent calendar unless we have something to report out?
It's the direction of the City Council. We've kept this on unfinished business because, as you recall, this was a specific item relative to updating the council on the Doheny Village Plan, forward planning efforts. And I think over time, and it might have even been your recommendation, that we broaden it to be more inclusive citywide of all of the different things happening. And so, you know, at the direction of the City Council, we're happy to place it wherever on the agenda you'd like.
Okay. Is that something we need the council to decide now? Or is the person, is the mayor at that time, is that person in charge of putting it either on the agenda or on the consent portion of the agenda?
I'd be supportive of moving it to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, you know, I...
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Yes, Mr. Miller?
I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, I agree with them. You can move it to consent calendar. If somebody wants to pull it for discussion, we can always do that.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right. So I...
I do have one question, though.
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Ms. Luna Reynosa, three, four, two, one, two, Pacific Coast Highway. That's commercial, shared parking. What is that?
Matt, do you, off the top of your head, recall?
Because it has a number C?
Well, we should add a column that has numbers, so I can more easily find which row you are referencing.
It's a CUP?
Three, four, two, and two.
I don't see, I don't have row numbers online.
No, I'm saying we should add a good column.
Two Left Forks. Two Left Forks.
Oh, yes.
Oh.
That was the Two Left Forks Restaurant. They're expanding into a currently vacant suite and need to utilize a shared parking program to meet the parking standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, then, motion to receive and file the report. Do I have a motion?
Got it.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Motion carries four zero, and the report is received and filed. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're on to new business. Item seventeen, Story Poll Ordinance. Staff report?
We have none.
Okay. So this is something that I have put on, so I guess I will talk about what I had in mind. We have a story poll ordinance under Measure H for the Town Center, but we have no story poll ordinance for the rest of the city. So this was my intention to have story poll ordinance for the rest of the city, although it would not encompass Town Center since it only, since it has its right now. At some point, since I see from our city attorney's report that there's some differences, at some point, it could be determined through a vote of the people, if H ever goes to a vote of the people, if at that time, we want to match the story poll ordinances. But as we were, as we were listening to the two appeals, Via Verde and the wave, it really struck me that a lot of what people were grappling with was the heights, the scales, the bulk. We spent a lot of time trying to understand, well, what are these things going to look like? And if we required, as many other cities do, that projects that meet the parameters put up what's called story polls, those polls that, you know, show what a project, if it were built, what its dimensions would look like, then we could maybe dispense with some of the concerns and some of the fears that people have that, oh my God, this project looks like it's just going to be huge. Or we may find out that, you know, it actually doesn't fit within the character of the neighborhood. But like so many people, and myself included, it's very hard to visualize something from a piece of paper. And so I wanted to give the residents a way to actually be able to look at what is going to potentially impact them in their neighborhoods, next door to them, near them, or somewhere in their city. So that's my thoughts. So I guess I would move that we consider the proposed amendment to the Dana Point Municipal Code requiring the use of staking for development projects other than in Town Center. So do I have a...
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions before we proceed.
Okay.
Under, on page three, item number seventeen, applicability.
Yep.
Item number three. What is Design Review Authority? Who is that?
At this point, it's our Planning Department and Planning Commission. Because they have, as I've talked with Ms. Luna Reynosa, they have some discretion, as we saw from the Via Verde project, where they made some changes to it because they felt that things needed to be made. So if you want to jump in there?
Absolutely. There is, the functions of a typical design review board are currently within staff and the Planning Commission. I would recommend that this term, under this proposed ordinance, appears to be a defined term, and that the zoning code would need to define who the design review, what that means, who that is. It would need a definition.
Okay.
So we're not looking at a separate authority to review these projects? It kind of hints at that to me, that we're going to have a design review authority.
I agree with the way it's capitalized. It appears like that. I think that if that's, I'm not clear what the intent is either. I think it was taken from Laguna Beach, which does have a separate body. So I think there would be a way to, depending on what the intent is, is to write it consistent with the intent.
Yeah.
So that could either be the way it currently is or with a separate body.
It was taken from a couple cities. It's kind of a compilation. But we could define it at this point as the Planning Department and then the Planning Commission. But in the future, if there ever were a constituted design review board, it would be applicable without having to come back and change it. But at this point, we don't have one, so it wouldn't be defined that way.
So just a couple more questions on applicability. All new projects. So if you currently had an existing structure and you demolished it, that would be considered a new project?
It probably should be, yes. If you're demolishing it and starting again, then yes.
So what does this leave out? Anybody making small changes? If you have anything you're adding to your second story, like a patio, or like a deck or something, that would include putting in story polls?
Right. Well, item one, a new structure additions greater than fifty percent of the floor area. So, you know, if you're just adding a room, a deck, something that isn't substantial, fifty percent of your floor area, you wouldn't qualify for having to do the staking.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just for clarification's sake, because number seven, all projects that are to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, there are projects that exceed the thresholds identified in Area Number One. So one and seven are in conflict of each other.
Okay.
So we would need some clarification on that.
Okay. And so what kind of projects would be reviewed by the Planning Commission that would not, well, I guess what kind of projects are reviewed by the Planning Commission?
Anything in the coastal zone requires a coastal development permit. And the way the Coastal Act defines development is very broad. So a roof, deck, a patio, very minor projects are required to have discretionary review under the Planning Commission. And to me, item number seven would require those projects to be subject to staking.
So we could say projects reviewed by the Planning Commission, as long as they are new structure or greater than the fifty percent of the original floor, and then one and seven would be compatible? Or take out...
Or take out seven.
The seven, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, after reviewing this, can I make a suggestion that maybe refer this to the Planning Commission for their review, and then they can bring it back to us? Would that be something that would be amenable to the rest of the council?
Okay. And what is it you would want the Planning Commission specifically to speak to?
I'd like them to look at their expertise, see if they think this is viable for our city, and what they would recommend us doing. I think it's something within their purview. They can bring it back to us if they see it's applicable, if it's needed. I think that would be a great place to start. You know, I'm kind of wavering either way or not. It seems like it's kind of a burden on people doing some minor modifications. But I think if the Planning Commissioner were to look at it and review it and give us a thumbs up on it, then maybe I could support that.
So if I may, Madam Mayor...
Yes?
Well, the code requires it has to go to the Planning Commission.
There we are.
So there's a whole process to amend your local coastal program, which our zoning code is part of. And there's a six-week review process where all of the changes have to be made available to the public. There's special noticing requirements. And so there's a very public process that's prescribed with an amendment to the local coastal program. And so one of those things is that Planning Commission has to make a written recommendation to the City Council. So there's certainly a very prescribed process that would have to be followed.
Okay. Would that satisfy what you were thinking?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. I think that's, you know, this is not my expertise. I've never been on the Planning Commission, so I think I defer to their wise judgment. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I was kind of going there anyway. I believe this would require a Zone Text Amendment. Are we currently going through a Zone, a zoning code review process? We're doing something like that down at Planning Commission right now, aren't we?
We are going to be reviewing a workshop with the Planning Commission for a Zone Code cleanup. The Zone Code cleanup, there's some criteria that staff has established to do that. It's best practice to look at your code and sort of clean it up every six months or so. The City of Dana Point has not done that in a long time. So we are phasing our code cleanup. And Phase One, the thresholds were typographical errors, conflicts, is it in contradiction with state law? Those were sort of the three areas that we're initially looking at for that purpose. And so we're taking those items to a workshop to the Planning Commission at the next Planning Commission meeting, and then we'll have to follow up with their written recommendation and then bring that to the City Council. And I think the goal is to have that to you all by the end of this year.
Okay. And the reason I would, I'm very uncomfortable with how this is written right now, this Design Review Authority, that sounds like an HOA to me. That's what HOAs do. They can require this. You know, I don't, the way it's written right now just makes me feel like the city's trying to act as a large HOA for residential. And that's where my issue is with this, really, is the residential piece of it. And I just don't feel that's our place. So I'd like Planning Commission to take a look and come back with something that doesn't require Design Review Board or Commission. Thanks.
Okay, so we could, well, I would ask when the Planning Commission looks at it, that it states clearly that this is not applicable to Town Center. And that with this Design Review Authority, it could be defined, Design Review Authority of Staff or Planning Commission. Because right now, you have that authority. So we could clarify that that's the authority that we're talking about that's already there anyway, and delete item seven.
So do we need a motion, Madam Mayor? Or should we just give staff direction to send this to Planning Commission? Direction to send to the Planning Commission?
Okay.
Okay.
Is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay.
You can do that.
So with, does anybody have any other changes that they'd want in there that we haven't talked about before it goes to the Planning Commission? Yes, Mr. Buzork?
I just want to ask a question. You said that it's not going to apply to the Town Center.
Correct.
What, maybe this is a legal question, obviously. What, maybe this is a legal question, obviously. What's the interplay between the story poll, this proposed ordinance and the town center?
The town center plan has a story poll provision in it. And I, going off memory, I can't recall if in Measure H, there were some specific requirements for story polling or not as well. But in any event, the entire town center plan was approved as part of Measure H, and we can't make any changes to it, including the story polling requirements, without a vote of the people.
Okay. So, it was, we wouldn't, as proposed, we couldn't go forward with this ordinance?
This ordinance, as proposed or modified, whatever, could not, could not apply in town center without a vote of the people.
Okay. I understand. All right. Thank you.
But could apply to the rest of the city. We specifically exempt town center because it has its own story poll ordinance, and that ordinance, actually, it has its own, the municipal code section specifically says town center, and that was passed by a vote of the people. So, we wouldn't, we would state that this will not apply to town center. Correct?
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, any other changes you would want to see before it goes to planning? Okay. Well, then if I could direct staff, or we could direct staff with those modifications to-
Understood.
-start it through the process.
Great.
Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Did we have any public comment on that, by the way?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item eighteen, open data policy and establishment of council subcommittee to oversee progress and implementation. So, do we have any staff report on that?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, once again, I have brought this to the council. And I have been entering, I have been talking with our city manager about this for several weeks, wouldn't you say, Mr. Denny?
Yes.
And the thought is that we do a lot of public record request acts. We spend city attorney time on that. I think it was like nearly $40,000 last year of city clerk designated time for our city attorney, much of that being Public Record Request Act, not to mention the time that the city spends in going through these, answering them, looking through documents. So, the idea here, and many cities are starting to do this, and I actually heard this first from several sources. But when I went to the League of Cities, right after I was put on the council, there was a gentleman there who was talking about all of the data that he was able to comb through, search, and do all kinds of analysis in, from New York City, because they have this open data policy. So, that it's put on our city website in the form of machine readable, searchable data, as opposed to, right now, it's like Adobe or PDF, so that you can't really do much with it. So, this would allow people to search the data for what they want, rather than having to make Public Record Act requests. And I believe, Mr. Denny, you were saying that Garden Grove has, has this and is willing to, to share this with us?
The Garden Grove software is very specific to Public Record Act requests themselves and managing them.
Okay.
And it's a really terrific application that we have through Kathy Ward's office. Talked to them about acquiring, they developed it in-house and have offered it to us at no cost, other than, we'll have to talk to Mike about our costs for installation, storage, and that sort of thing. But we're actively looking, looking at that currently.
And there are several, I guess you call them off-the-shelf programs that do this? Is that correct?
So, I think you're talking about more data platforms. The Garden Grove application is more of a PRA application for members of the public to go online, to make their requests, to complete their request, as well as for staff to place the responses to their requests online as well, so that it's all there and searchable and available publicly. The applications you're referencing are more open data tools. OpenGov is one, Socrata is another.
Right.
There are a number of tools that a variety of cities are looking at. We are looking at some of them as well. Mike and I have a conference call set up for, I think, next week or the week after with one of them. I'll be meeting with Socrata while I'm at ICMA.
Right.
So, we are looking at a variety of these things currently, if, at the outset, if only to get our financial data online and make that accessible. And then going forward, look at other opportunities for, for data availability.
Right. And this is, to me, the ultimate in open, transparent government. And the financial data seems to be a good place to start, since it's probably where most of the Public Record Act requests come from, aren't they? Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, in addition, we are digitizing our microfiche, and that will help us greatly, again, for those public records that can be available through the city's website. And we're trying to do that as quickly as possible.
And is that something people can put in keywords, search, and get that information as well?
Yes, that's correct. By street address, so on, so forth, permit, that type of thing.
And at some point, we could get all kinds of data, right? Criminal data, information from our police. So, those were my thoughts. So, I would, I would like to establish a subcommittee who could be involved, oversee this, and report back on, you know, what's out there, what it will do, what it will cost. See if there's any interest in that. Yes, Mr. Tomlinson?
I just have a couple questions on terminology.
Okay.
On page five of item number eighteen, second line down, metadata. I'm not, I've heard of meta-humans in the movies, but I don't know what the metadata is. What's metadata?
My understanding is the metadata is the data behind, correct?
Yes. That's, that's one way to say it. It's the sort of description of each field of data and what it's, what it's attempting to do.
And that's how you pretty much get your keywords, is through the metadata. So, it goes in there and it searches. When you put a keyword in, it looks at the metadata and then it pulls it out.
Okay. Thank you for that analysis. Page six, third line up from the bottom, executive order. It's, what's, does meant by executive order? Are we, do we have, who's issuing this executive order? Us as the council, or is, it seems a little strange to have that wording in there, because I don't think I've heard the term executive order.
And where are you? I'm sorry.
Section five.
Section five, okay.
First line.
First line, section five, executive order.
Oh, I think that's just resolution. So, if we were to pass this resolution within this three-month period.
Okay. And then now that I've had my questions answered for the terminology, I have a few questions on how this would work. So, we'd have a subcommittee of the City Council, and then the City Council Subcommittee, department heads, we report to the Subcommittee on what information to release. They would have, so how many departments do we have here?
Well, five of us, not including city attorney and police.
So, the Subcommittee, these five department heads would report to the Subcommittee on what information to release.
That wasn't, well, here's what I'm thinking, is that the Subcommittee would work with the city manager. The city manager would be doing all the behind-
Okay, that was one of my concerns. I don't want to-
Behind-the-scenes work with the departments. And, but it would just be, you know, working with the city manager to talk about what's out there, what Mr. Kilabrua and Mr. Denny have, have found out in their calls and, you know, just-
That eases my concern, because I didn't want city council members, department heads reporting directly to city council members or subcommittees. I think that usurps the role of the city manager.
Yes, I would agree with you.
That's one of the concerns I had. And then... Just the cost. Well, that's all I have right now, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
And I guess that would be one of the things that the, the city manager and the, the Subcommittee would be talking about, the cost, the benefit, the downsides, you know, and, and working through that whole process. Because, you know, I, I know it on a very, you know, superficial level at this point. I haven't gotten into a specific open data platform, but I was very impressed with what I saw. I think, as I said, it is the ultimate in open, transparent government and wanted to explore it.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, there is not any budget currently for any of these tools. We are beginning the process to research. But again, without budget, we won't be acting on that research. We'll be preparing that research, preparing that information, and ultimately presenting something for council's consideration. So, I just want to throw that caution out there, certainly vis-à-vis timing expectations.
Yes, yes. And that would all be part of, you know, what we're exploring is the costs, what it can do, how long this will take to get up, to speed, and, and, you know, the, the whole process. I wouldn't expect it to be overnight. It's going to be, it's going to be an involved process, but I believe it's where cities are going. And I think it will do a lot to also ensure trust between residents and the city when it is open and transparent. And that's ultimately a goal of mine. So, any other thoughts? Yes, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at this, and I think we're way out in front of where we need to be in terms of trying to create a policy at this point. I think we've, talking to staff, they're already going down this path with, with the PRA, giving staff direction to go out and investigate, you know, a system. And I know Mr. Denny's worked with, I think it's called OpenGov, that's the one from, that they used at the county.
Correct.
And, and he's worked with some of these that we can just give staff direction at this point to go out and identify some programs and bring back costing to us. I don't think we need an ad hoc committee for this at this point, or even create, generate a policy, because we don't know what's out there, other than to say we want financials reviewable or searchable, and, and we can do, you know, and we can display them however we want. Same thing with permitting, code enforcement, law enforcement. Go find us a couple programs that can do this. And I, I think we're way out in front trying to create a policy over it right now. I think once, once we find out what's out there, that's when we can create our policy and then give the, you know, decide, does it do enough? Does it not do enough? And we can do that right here at the DISS, as they, as they give, I don't think we need an ad hoc for that. I mean, I think that's something staff is, it's their, it's their job, basically, to bring things like that back to us. So, I would recommend that we just give direction to staff at this point to go out and find these programs and bring them back.
Okay. And the purpose of the policy was to just give some direct, I mean, it was just to consider this policy. So, this is not an, this is not the time or place to actually try to pass a policy. But for me, starting with what I'm thinking and the goal that I'm trying to get to is easier than some vague concept. So, that's why I like to start with something that's kind of like an action plan.
Yeah, I understand that, and I appreciate that. But, but I think giving staff exactly what we just told them, you need to give us a program that can do everything we just discussed. All departments have to be searchable, presentable, however. We want to do it personally, not how, you know, staff wants to present it, how, and individual, the community. They say, I want to see it in a different format. I should be able to pull that and do it that way. And then just direct it for each individual department has, has to, it has to be available for that, and then let them go find it.
And if, as you provide us that direction, as a part of that direction, if you would like to direct us, further direct us in our interaction with these various organizations that are selling these products, to inquire of them of certain best practices around policy documents, certainly when we come back to you with recommendations, we can also bring a document like this to you for your consideration when you're considering what platform we'll end up using for delivery of the open data. Because ultimately, this will come down to a, a platform for us to present and offer all of this data. And as we do that, we can also bring that policy with it at the same time.
And my thoughts with the Subcommittee, and I totally hear what you're saying, is just that, you know, somebody owns it, and so somebody is likely to shepherd it through the process. Not so much that staff can't do it, but somebody is motivated to say, hey, what's going on? Let's talk, when they have a million other things to do.
Well, I think we can give ownership to the city manager on this one.
You want that?
Go do it.
It's already there.
All right.
Go do it and then bring it back to us. I mean, I understand what you're saying. And if we need to put a timeline on it, that we expect a report back in a month or however long, you know, that gives them-
Okay.
-a goal to hit. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that sounds fair.
I mean, I would- I would expect as a part of the mid-cycle budget review, you'll probably be seeing some proposals for budget for these types of acquisitions. And at that time, we can also bring some policy language for you to consider as well. Because again, there's not anything currently budgeted. We're very early in our research. But as we put that research together and put information together, I would anticipate we'll bring something to you in the springtime of next year for your consideration.
Okay. So, how does that sound? All right. So, if we could, Mr. Buzork, any, okay. Mr. Tomlinson?
I just support open data. I think it's a great idea. The more information the public has readily accessible to them on a researchable basis on, on the computer, the more, the more open we are. I agree with you on that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, if we could just direct staff then to, by next spring, when we do budget adjustment, to have a report for us on what's available out there, costs, budget, if it's in our budget, the benefits of each of the platforms you've looked at, and that sort of thing.
Consider it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I concur with you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Onto item nineteen, purchase of a police motorcycle. Staff report, please.
Right. Mr. Kilabrua and/or assisted by Lieutenant Chilton, if necessary?
Yeah, real quick, real quick. Earlier this year, calendar year, our motor officer was rear-ended on the toll road. Unfortunately, Jenny, Jenny was a, you know, great servant to our community here, and she wasn't able to return to our community. But in addition, we lost the motorcycle. We did get a reinsurance reimbursement. Russ has been diligently working to hire the replacement. And I believe he's, he started this week, if I'm not mistaken, or next week?
November tenth.
Oh, okay. And we're working, we want to work toward purchasing the new motorcycle. It was in the rollover report. That's been deferred to December, but we want to bring this action forward so we can move forward with the purchase.
Okay. So, we got some insurance money, but not enough to buy?
We got the value of the, the used motor that was damaged.
And so, how much, I think I heard, what, $35,000?
Yeah, we, we received $28,821 in our insurance reimbursement, and we're asking for up to $35,000. So, we're soliciting quotes right now.
And are there other costs associated with this? Repair, maintenance, insurance?
Yeah. As I mentioned in the staff report, that this is, the actual, the ongoing costs of maintaining an eventual replacement of the motor is being included in our vehicle program that we're putting together and will be bringing back to council shortly.
Okay. Now, I, I understand, though, that if the patrol person who's dedicated to traffic uses a vehicle, a car, then the Orange County Sheriff's Department furnishes it, but if it's a motorcycle, the city pays?
Yes. Vehicles are included in our contract and are provided by the county, but they do not at this time provide motorcycles.
So, why would-
And we are actively discussing that with the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. So, why would we, what, what's the benefit to us to have something that we're paying for versus a vehicle that Orange County Sheriff's paying for, given that we are paying for premium service here?
We buy the vehicles regardless. So, if we were to add another deputy in a car, we would be buying a new car, and then we'd have an amount added to our contract monthly that'll be not only paying for maintenance and use, but also the eventual replacement of it. So, regardless, we're going to end up buying this vehicle.
Okay.
Whether it was on the county contract or ours.
I see. Okay. So, we don't have a car that's waiting for this motor officer. We would have to buy something, whether it's a vehicle or a motorcycle.
Yeah, they have the option of using one of our existing patrol cars. We do not have a motorcycle, or they're walking.
I'm sorry?
Or they'll be walking.
Okay. So, we, I guess we don't have a car. Okay. We have to buy something regardless of what we do. It's just a question of which we're going to buy. Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have-
Mr. Tomlinson?
A question for Lieutenant Chilton. It seems to me that motor officers would be primarily tasked with traffic enforcement issues, as opposed to-
Right. The advantages of a motor officer versus a traffic car, a lot of times are traffic cars, even though the vehicle's equipped with radar and all that. Because the vehicle is more suited for calls for service, these traffic cars sometimes get sucked into handling calls for service, taking people to jail, and et cetera, et cetera. You have a motor officer, they're really dedicated to traffic enforcement. They can't transport anyone to jail, so they're not really pulled into the regular calls for service. So, you're getting enhanced traffic enforcement with a, a motor officer versus a traffic car.
And we, have we not seen that our motor officer was very effective in the last year and earlier this year before the accident, that she was very effective in, in reducing traffic- accidents and-
Yeah, when it comes to traffic enforcement, you just can't beat a motor officer, they're just, it's, they can hide better, and, you know, they can get in and out of traffic when they're pursuing a violator or whatnot. There's no comparison. If it's the desire to have better traffic enforcement in the community, the motor is the way to go.
Okay, and do we have any statistics or data on how long a motorcycle lasts before, you know, we have to replace it again, either because of accident versus a car?
A lot of vehicles, even patrol cars or motorcycles, it's by miles. You know, for instance, patrol cars, a lifespan is, you know, 100,000 motor, a little more miles than that. So, yeah, you will eventually have to replace the motorcycle. You'll probably get three to five years out of it.
I guess I was asking, is it more likely to get in an accident, or wrecked, or was this a kind of, just a-
Well, there is inherent risk with being a motor officer, you know, you're out there, you're exposed, it's not so much the actions or inactions of the motor officers, it's the motorists around them, and so, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, there is a higher degree, a higher risk with a motor officer, yes.
So for reference, we purchased the prior motorcycle a little more than three years ago, and we can get you more specific data on that, if you like.
And then if a vehicle gets into an accident, Orange County Sheriff's Department replaces it, just it's part of our contract, whereas here, we have to pay whatever the difference is between what we get, insurance money, and what it costs?
For the time being, until we can get that changed.
Okay. Good, all right. Any other questions? Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Don't we have one of those insurance companies, accident for, or new car replacement, and the girl says, I want to replace Brad? Can we not get something like that, so we just could, can replace the vehicle?
You can never replace Brad.
Yeah, I know. We'll talk to CJPIA about that.
All right, thanks, I'll move the item, thanks.
Any other questions? Do I, let's see, where are we? Okay, recommended that the city council authorize the purchase of a police motorcycle, do I have a?
A little second.
No, no public comments, was no, okay, so, but thank you. So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Okay, vote. Okay, you've got your motor. All right, so now, no more public comments. Staff report, Mr. Denny?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Munoz?
I have nothing this evening.
Counsel, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I would just like to report that I was, I don't want to say lucky enough, but I was afforded the opportunity to go and tour the Canyon Fire Two sites, and see some of the things that our firefighters do, and it's pretty amazing when you see a fire burn an entire canyon right up to a property line, and our firefighters are able to stop it right there. You'll see the backside of fences burned, but the dwellings themselves are protected. And I had a chance to discuss that with Division Chief Abel, as he was giving me a tour, and he explained to me that when these wind-driven fires come, they pretty much know where they're going, so they know how to deploy their assets, because they go in a straight line. He goes, what's scary is when they get really big, and they create, they're like, they come, it's not really a firestorm, but it's like, it creates a thunderstorm inside the fire, and then they start acting very strangely. But I just want to say, it was really impressive to see it, it's eye-opening when you see up close what these fires actually do to our natural resources in these canyons. It's like being on the moon. It's like moonscape, you have sticks sticking up, everything's black. And I just wanted to thank OCFA for letting me go out and do that. One other thing, people were wondering, why was the 241 shut down for so long? And I asked Chief Abel that same question, as we were going down 241 in the closed section. He said, you see all the pink stuff on the road that's fire retardant that is dropped by the airplanes? He said, when that gets wet, it's like Vaseline. And so, you know, if it gets wet, you know, cars will be spinning everywhere, and it's not easy to get off the road. There's a very specific process that they take to do that, it's, you can't just go out and pressure wash it off. So that's why it took a little bit longer. They're now open, I just want to thank OCFA and TC for working hard to get the roads open, and protecting as much property as they could. Thanks, and I'll get my list of meetings with the clerk, thanks.
Thank you. Well, I would second that with the firefighters, that they do amazing work. You just can't say enough about them. But I also have very exciting news. Today, I was at the Board of Supervisors, speaking on behalf of the Dana Point Harbor Partners LLC, the P3 for the harbor revitalization, and along with the harbor merchants and the boaters. And I am so excited to report that by a vote of five to zero, the Board of Supervisors has approved the Dana Point Harbor Partners LLC's bid to revitalize the harbor. So it is actually, after 20 years, moving through, we are at a, this was a really critical vote, people were, that I went with, were very concerned that the vote, that the vote would be delayed, yet again, they've been, you know, these people have been with the harbor since it was a harbor, and so they were very excited as well, and, sorry I missed the drinks. But, so that's very exciting news, and I wanted to thank our supervisor, Lisa Bartlett, for everything that she's done to shepherd it through this, it was not an easy process. So thank you, and everybody who worked so hard to do that. And I will, I have already turned in my report, yes? Mr. Buzork?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report. I have already turned in my list of meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Tomlinson?
I have nothing to report either, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? I actually looked this up in Robert's Rules. It requires a second and a vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned until November 7? November 7, right? Yeah? Somebody? November 7? Okay, right here, council chambers.